All right, the time is now 6:45 PM. We'd like to call this Pension Board Meeting to Order for the Town of Plainfield, April 11th, 2022. And we'll call it to order, and now roll call.
Art Gagnon, Scott Arden.
Kevin Cunningham. Kristi did mention that she would not be here tonight, so she is at least letting us know that she won't be around. Item C is to approve the minutes of the pension meeting dated February 14, 2022. Have you had some time to read through that?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 14, 2022.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Dean, thank you. Any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, New Business Considered Act on Pension Distribution as Requested. There is one in your packet. And this is a pension request by Cheryl Holman. She is looking for the monthly pension to be $441.78, as you see in your packet. And Cheryl is a parent educator, up to now, is a parent educator for the Board of Education, and been there for 25 years, so we do want to thank her for her years of service. So if you've read through what we have here, it would be to approve a monthly pension payment of $441.78, starting on 5/1/2022, to Cheryl Holman.
More questions?
Yes.
I noticed on her application, she requests a start date of 1/1/2022.
On the education. She requests a payment on April 1st, 2022.
So on the next page, on the other page, it says 5/1. It said forward.
Is that just a typo or...?
Okay. So we need some clarification. Do we have any clarification from our Finance Director? If they be able to do whichever is preferable, will we have to make a motion so that the Finance Director is able to reach out to Cheryl to make that start date correct? So would we then go forward with a requested pension method?
Make a motion to approve the pension request for Cheryl Holman.
Motion's been made. Second?
Second.
Cunningham, we'll follow it up with the Finance Director to make sure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is all that is on our agenda for the Pension Committee. At this time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
And Scott, second, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All righty, we are now adjourned at 6:48. All right, the time is now 7:00 PM. We'd like to call this April 11th, 2022, Board of Select Meeting to Order. Ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, and now to the America, into the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now roll call.
Art Gagnon, Scott Arden.
Kevin Cunningham. Item C, approved meeting minutes from Board of Select Meeting from 3/28/22.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from March 28th, 2022. Second.
Scott, thank you. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, Public Comment. Anybody here from the public wish to speak tonight? Okay, there is no old business, we'll go right into new business. I would ask that we add two items onto the agenda. The first item is, item number eight, Discuss and Bypass Procurement Policy for Purchase of Backhoe. And I will get into more detail when we discuss that, but I need to have that added to the agenda.
Make a motion to add item eight to the agenda.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And one more, thank you very much, on all. One more is to add item nine, Discuss and Bypass Procurement Policy for Purchase of a Records Management System. It's a housekeeping issue.
Make a motion to add item nine to the agenda. Close second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. All right, the first one up is Consider an Act on Tax Refunds as Requested by the Tax Collector, totaling $492.17. First one is from Allied Financial, for $182.07. The second one is for Toyota Lease Trust, for $310.10. What your pleasure is on that.
Motion to approve the tax refunds, in total of $492.17. Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item two, Consider an Act on Removal of Inland Wetlands Water Force Commission Members Due to Town Charter, Section 79A1, and also a resignation. I can get into detail with that now. Item two, in your booklet, we noticed that there was some need to have support for the Inland Wetlands Water Force Commission. It's an appointed commission, and according to the charter, we do have the right to ask people if they could understand that we need to move on, and there are some provisions, and they're talking about unexcused absences for regular meetings. I spoke to both, spoke to both Mr. Labonte and Mr. Jocelyn, and both understood the situation. Mr. Labonte said that it's fine to continue on. Mr. Jocelyn asked if it would be okay if he put in a letter for resignation, which you have in your packet there, and I see no problem with that either. So at this time, what I'd look to do is to accept the resignation from Mr. Jocelyn, but take, also take off Mr. Labonte off of that appointed commission.
What's his first name?
I'm sorry, John Labonte.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Jeffrey Jocelyn, from the Inland Wetlands Commission, and to remove John Labonte from the Inland Wetlands Commission. Have a second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now that brings us to, making sure we have people who would help us out by being there and attending. We did put that out to both Republican and the Democrat Town Committee. I guess the easy one to start with would be, the first one for the Democrats, we have a letter from Sean Peterson, as you have your packet, your interest in the position of Inland Wetlands, and you have served on planning as only before, so we very much appreciate it. And you are the only person, for Democrat, that put anything in, so I guess at this time we can do it one by one. And entertain a motion to accept the letter for putting Sean Peterson on to the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Make a motion to Sean Peterson, on the Inland Wetlands Commission. Second.
And motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much, and if you can get sworn in right away, I'd send you the letter by the time it takes to get the letter to your house. Probably everybody can take care of that. And the next one up, we have Republicans, there's two people who have posted a request to be on that commission. By the way, either member would be, would be serving the town fine. Ava Cologne had put a letter in. The first letter that actually came in was from Leon. He wants to start getting involved in the town, so it's, it's up to you. I like to let, you know, you've read the letters, I'd like, I would like to add everybody here to stay there playing to it, but I know Ava serves currently on the Economic Development Commission.
As the Board of Assessment and Appeals also.
Also Board of Assessment and Appeals. So, I mean, you can look at this either way, she's, she's wanting to be part of the town issues, or to serve on boards and commissions, and Leon is also looking to do so, so I don't know if this calls spraying the wealth or whatever, but I'll take the, I'll entertain the motion from someone to go forward.
Seeing as a new person, again, the file, I'll make a motion to appoint Leon LeFer, Senior, to the Inland Wetlands Committee.
Here to debate.
What's that?
Debating?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. I never want to turn someone away from that, that's already been showing that they want to bring forward, but you also want to make it so that other people have an opportunity, and I think that's one way to look at it. So we have a motion by Art, second by Scott. Any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item number four, rather a large packet, but basically it's the ordinances. We are due, bound by our Town Charter, Section 53D, to review that annually. It's not that I have lots of time on my hands, but I have lots of time on my hands now, because I couldn't get it to the computers, and you just can't do anything, so that's why I had it handy, is by through them all. But note that there's, wait, one, two, sixteen there in question. A lot of them are just basically picking the right for December that wasn't reflected the first time around, which is not a big deal, like the first one. The second one, ordinance 115, talks about a dollar amount, there's a typo where, where the comma was placed, and went too many zeros. Third one is, again, pointing to the right ordinance. The minimums is the next one, 119, it's again, it's a small change. Ordinance number eight, we might want to review the ordinance for the time of the changes, because I did talk to the Red Star voters on this, and I showed them the paper on it, and they said, they don't want to have ordinance number eight in there at all, it's, it's moved at this point. So it actually works with what we have for, you know, the eight o'clock stop time. For those in the audience who was either ordinance number eight, said the, for state or special elections, it stops at 7:00 PM. So since it's an ordinance, and we have other things that, you know, supersede that, I think it's appropriate then to consider, just, you know, repealing ordinance number eight.
Is this in the charter, times?
Um, yeah, it's also in the charter, so that's why it was conflicting. Um, yeah, the charter said eight o'clock. Ordinance number 64 and 68, I think if you take a look at those, you'll note that those are churches. One of them, I don't think even stands anymore. So churches do get the tax exemption anyway, so it's possible that we can talk about repealing those. The next one's a great one, number 53. It might be appropriate to repeal this, because we no longer have it in Rayhoun Park, and then talks specifically about taking the daily tape from the Rayhoun Park. So we don't need that one anymore. Ordinance 77, should again, again, a minor change to, it points to ordinance 132, should have pointed to 32, not 132, 133. Ordinance number 82, discuss the required number of dwellings.
Second, number on top. How the streets are numbered.
Yep, I think that's an interesting one, if you take a look at number 82, and there's also one in addition to it. So it says, ordinance number 82, shall be the duty of the owner of every dwelling, building, and structure in the Town of Plainfield, to display in a place readable and visible from the road on said owner's property, figures at least two and a half inch high, showing the number of the dwelling, building, or structure. Again, this was built, this was put together in 1986. And if you take, turn to the page, the next page over, you'll see in the bottom left-hand corner, this is the state Connecticut Building Codes. So the building codes talk about how they're supposed to be addressed, and that is actually, each character shall be not less than four inches in height, with a stroke width of no less than half an inch. So that doesn't even match the building code or the card, so something for discussion, I guess we can talk about whether we want to modify it, or just say, instead of that, instead of just telling them exactly what the numbers are, say refer to the state building codes. That way, whenever it changes in the state building codes, it's covered.
I bet I think it's supposed to be.
Uh, yeah, I doubt we'll be. Ordinance 116, needs to have amended at 123. 75 reviewed for the time of public property, closure 75. This is an interesting one, on ordinance number 75, because it talks about Section 2, that it would be unlawful for persons to remain upon any property owned by the Town of Plainfield, or any other public place in the Town of Plainfield, or any private property adequately posted and registered with the Plainfield Police Department between the hours of 8:30 PM, 8:00 AM, unless a special permit is obtained by the Board of Select. I think if we take a look at the signs outside, we allow them to stay open until it's kind of locked. So even that's out of the line. It might be something for us to consider by changing the times. Or we can do the same thing what we do for the signage, say, times as posted, that way if we ever change it, based on whatever issue comes up.
Yeah, I think it's going to wait for a while.
The next two are basically just pointers, saying, you know, which ordinance this should be.
You notice that was one number off?
One number off, yeah. I mean, you have, you went through a lot, you went through quite a few, so. 74 needs to say ordinance 23. 77 states in the first line, then repeals ordinance 68, but it needs to say, it repeals 69, so again, it's a minor change. And then on 91, it should also include ordinance 40. I'm asking you to look at these and vote on these tonight, I am asking that we just, you know, review them, if there's something minor you wanted to do, because now that they have them here, and there might be some more that you have, so.
All right.
Okay.
You want to put one down, so I don't forget.
Okay.
Ordinance number 19. States that assessment date is September 1st, it should be October 1st. The tax assessment, make sure I do that.
Okay.
So that may be changed, too. But there are some more, I didn't have time this weekend to go over them.
Okay, if you want, you can send me the list, I can print them off, like in this packet, that makes it easier for us to read through.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I separated the typos.
Versus the actual change.
Yeah, because those we could do as a full slide.
Yep. So we can have, I'll take a look at that front. So it says, review ordinances or recommendations, so we don't have to act on it tonight. I would just ask that we collectively look at the whole packet, like you said, if it's a typo, it's a typo, it's something we can fix by course of life, and otherwise we have to go to a town meeting to make the other changes, so. Right. So we'll probably talk about that again in the next meetings, so we can get moving forward on this. Maybe collectively voting on the ones with the typo changes, and then we can move on to, just write that number down. Item number five is to review the updates to the annex. I think in your packet, you have something from CLA engineers. I sent out a request to two companies. One is still doing the documentation, writing it up, one engineer. The other one came and actually did a full walkthrough, done three hours. And this is the result of that report. I think the verbiage that I see on a regular basis is structurally compromised. And two, as it was explained to me, what you have is, when it was built, you had cement, rebar, and then cement on top. And that helps the structural integrity to hold up the size of building, you know, all of the walls and interior. The problem was that when you see that the lower level of the cement starts breaking away, and you can see then the rebar, then that structural integrity is minimized. So that's what I see going throughout this report. I don't see any other way around it, other than, I have some color pictures versus the one you have.
So the rebar is visible.
Oh, absolutely.
The Jocelyn's is being exposed to the interior.
Yep. With these two, I'm just going to say that there still has to be work to be done. We would have to go through a couple of more steps. One would be, obviously having a town meeting to explain this, but that part of that town meeting would also have to say that if we're looking to do something to the next step, it would require us to take money out of the fund balance. And how much money would that be? We don't know the exact number, because if you're putting it out to bid for some of the work to be done, take it down, it could be up to a certain point. I will tell you that the one company that went and did the initial inspection on it, gave us a cost analysis for the windows, taking out the lights, and then a separate number for the actual demo. So they are on the state bid list, and therefore we could go with them, or we could actually put it out to bid. It wouldn't hurt, in my opinion, to eventually go out to bid. Other things we have to do are, have to go to the National Registry, to explain to them the intent of taking it off the National Registry. You have to follow ordinance number 99, which talks about the demolition process, whether it is or isn't on historic society rules. So we have to do those types of items ahead of time, and then we would bring it up to a public vote, to go forward with it. The one thing I would just stress to the public is that you can't leave something like that, because it is a safety hazard, and eventually it could cause some issues, so I would prefer to do it the right way, and that's why we've been doing these step-by-step pieces so far. So that's the update there.
So you don't know when the second?
I should have it by the next week or so, and then by the next meeting, we'll probably come together with that. All right, item number six. You have in your packet, I hope now you have in your packet, a letter from the owner of Roman Construction, Pat Nakataro, is the owner of Roman Construction, he's looking to purchase that site, and he talks about how he's looking to bring in more jobs, between 1816 employees, a local expansion. He also would like to have his vehicles registered there. He would also look to build a small, he mentioned before to me, it would be between four or five thousand square foot building for some materials, some of the staffing, and to work on different equipment. What he does, it says here what he wants to do. So it's construction material related to the work site, and then working with American Industries.
Small building.
Yeah.
So most of the materials on.
Yep. And then those, those operators would work on sorting and the things that they would have to do in order to move the materials out. So with that, I do have a contract with him, I have not signed it, because I'm waiting to hear your opinion about it. You see, the last page also talks about the legal lot itself, it's actually talking about the tract of land where it's 8.21 acres. We did ask for full value for what was requested, and it was $59,000, and he did come up saying he would do that. So our next steps would be, if, it's a pleasure of the Board of Select, we would do a sending into the sale to the Board of Finance, and then eventually to a town meeting like you did on Lot 25, and I noticed I made a typo on number seven. But on the, item number six, it talks about Lot 30, sending it to sale as requested, to the Board of Finance, and then to a town meeting for final approval. So I wanted to know what your pleasure is. Item number six.
Make a motion to send the sale request to the Board of Finance, and have it come up for.
Of Lot 30?
For Lot 30.
Scott's made the motion?
A second.
Art's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And item number seven goes right with that, pending the approval of the Board of Finance's passage on the sale of Lot 30, that I part. We're going to set a town meeting date for the sale of Lot 30, and that would be, I'm going to let you know right now, we're looking at the dates and everything prepped up like last time, would be April 26th, which is a Tuesday, and it would be a 7:00 PM meeting. I'll relay this information to the Board of Finance. I've already spoken in need about this, and that's the discipline I had ahead of time, so that there's no guesswork here. So they're fine, they're fine with April 26th, or he is, and 7:00 PM. So I'd entertain a motion to set the town meeting for April 26th, 7:00 PM, for the sale of Lot 30, in I part.
So, moment. Second.
Any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, in your packet for number eight, you have, discuss the bypass procurement policy for purchase of backhoe. We've been talking about this, where we can utilize some more support for safety, and that's definitely one of the things that the Highway Department's looking for. I put together a quick packet for you to show you that Sourcewell, Sourcewell is a federal bid company, so they follow all of the state bid guidelines as well. Sourcewell is a agency which we have an account with, we've used before. So what they were looking for was a John Deere 310 SLHL four-wheel drive, it's a little picture of it right there. We thought initially that we'd be looking for $220,000 for the vehicle, with the percentage of what we were able to save off the bid price. Because they are a federal bid company, the price is actually going to be $130,926. They wanted to do an additional $2,500 for the upgrade of the tires, and the reason for the upgrade for the tires is because you're taking over the road more, so you want some sturdier tires, it'll last a little longer. So the grand total was $133,426. So at this time, what we'd look to do is to bypass bid procurement policy for this purchase, and I'll let you know one more thing. We did talk to Kelly about being able to utilize monies from our ARB fund, that's what we talked about before, where else can we, you know, best to use those monies, but this was one of the items, this, and also two of the police cruisers. So we thought that would be about $300,000, but actually saved quite a bit here, but that's where we get the money, so it doesn't have to come out of the general fund, and that does help us in this as well. So I guess I would entertain a motion, at this point, to bypass procurement policy for the purchase of the John Deere 310 SLHL with four-wheel drive. If you want to put the amount in there, that's fine as well.
We have to draw a draw, too.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to bypass procurement policy, and provide the fund, the funds available for the backhoe, it's $133,426.
Motion's made.
I will.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then the final one is housekeeping. The Finance Director asked me to put this on here. This is Discuss and Bypass Procurement Policy for the Purchase of Records Management System. She said, I thought we talked about that already publicly, but she said, I guess it comes from the Select to make the vote, just to make sure we know we're bypassing procurement policy, so that's why it's here, Discuss and Bypass Procurement Policy for the Purchase of Records Management System, as it's only one company that does that, and it's, I think, just a little over $200,500. But that's what they'd like to do, so entertain a motion for that.
Can you give them?
You could, yeah.
What was it?
Two hundred, because we, we said spending up to 240, uh, 220, 220.
So that's the amount we need, right?
Yep.
Make a motion to bypass the procurement policy for the records management system for the police station, $220,000.
Up to, yep.
Up to.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For other items, I mean, there's a lot of things that are going on. We've been talking about, when we talked about the ordinances, it was a question, I came forward, I wanted to start a group or a committee for, like, and I don't think we have to go there, because we have something already drafted. We'd like to bring this up in future discussion, about, like, ordinance, and what it means, and what it entails, and then have input from the public at a public hearing, and make adjustments as needed, so. That's, I just wanted to follow that one up. I did want to follow up the fact that we do have six events coming up. I'm trying to get a flyer to get it forward, but just for the public's awareness, on April 23rd at 9:00 AM, the collective Plainfield and Musup Little League are having their singular parade, and that'll be starting off over in Musup by American Legion 91 at 9:00, and anybody's welcome to come and join festivities. That is on April 23rd, 9:00 AM. June 7th, 5:00 PM, right here in the Lions Park, weather permitting, if it's going to be bad weather, we'll have Holden inside. be bad weather, we'll have it pulled inside, but these are for all the Vietnam veterans who are in town, and we've already searched all the records for that, and we have the Lieutenant Governor coming for a ceremony for that as well. That's June 7th, 5:00 PM, right here. July 14th, downtown Plainfield Bike Night, same as last year, trying to expand it just a little bit, one more road over, but working on it right now. That's Bike Night, I'm not sure the actual start time for that. August 6th, I think this goes 10 to 2, and this is right here in the Alliance Park, August 6th, celebrate Plainfield Day. We have already picked a date for the fireworks for the town, and that's also August 6th, 9:00 PM, same site as last time, up by the Shepherd Hills Soccer Field. Weather permitting, it will be the next day. Then August 14th, VJ Parade, and that starts off at 1:01. Those are the events that are happening right now, but we'll probably be adding a few more to the calendar. And other than that, does anybody else have anything else?
Sure. I have a question, Sean Peterson. The backhoe we're replacing, this is probably, page one?
It's very well dated, so what we're looking to do is if, they actually said they would take a trade-in, so we may actually get a little less than that from the 133.
What year is the one?
I couldn't tell you, I just do know that they were looking to put that into five-year capital for years, so it's in need, definitely in need. I think it's over 25 years old, I'm pretty sure it's much older than that.
Okay.
Anything else? Alright, hearing nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, at 7:20.